Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone in attendance and the ones watching on live stream. I'd like to call and order this meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board. If you would, let's stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda. Any adjustments that we need to know of? We are good. Approval of the minutes.
Hope you'll have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Minutes. Any adjustments? June.
Sir.
Carrie.
Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, I do have a couple of adjustments. On page four of the minutes. If you look down to near the bottom of the page, thirty-two dash eighty-one. I think what was referenced there was thirty-two dash eighty, Section One. Just for clarification. And also, there was, I think I questioned relief actions that existed for property owners. And I believe Mr. Kirkland discussed Board of Adjustments as a potential relief on a variance request on that item. Then on page five. Under Dwelling Garage Apartment as Accessory, this is near the bottom, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to specify that that was District R six MF. That change.
I can listen to it and see if it was said on there, but I can't add it after the fact.
Okay, okay, thank you. And there are some other specifics here. Do you want me to go through those, Lisa?
I mean, again, if they're... I'll have to listen to it and see if it was in the audio, but I can't clarify it after the fact. So, if, that's up to you. If you want to go through them, and I can listen again and see if they're on there.
Okay. So, top of the next page, Bars and Nightclubs. I think there was a question about whether there's differentiation to ruaries in that. Then down below, Gas Sales Operations. I think there were some discussions about whether that should be consolidated into a general automotive group in the uses. Golf Carts. As you're going down the page, Golf Cart Low Speed, Golf Cart Low Speed Vehicle Sales and Rentals. Need to check and clarify definitions and validate the regulations. Kinnels Outside and Outdoor. Again, Lisa, maybe this is just something you can check. I had it noted that it was specified for PS in CB and CLD districts. Radio and TV Stations, going on down the page, again, specified in CLD district. Vendors. There was a note, not only to check specific definition, but also to check the regulations around that. Airports. Uses would be allowed. The next, the last sentence under airports, the uses here would be allowed in CLD only. Again, needs regulations. And then Wireless Communication Facilities. Again, specific to regulations around sufficient protections in residential areas. And I think that's all.
Okay. Again, I'll have to listen to that, because I can't, I can't add it after the fact.
Thank you to the board for your forbearance.
Thank you. Tim.
During the last meeting, I believe that we had, we were talking about the tree ordinance. And I had believed that I had asked a question, was the thirty-inch softwood removed? And you had responded, yes, it was. But then when I looked through the minutes, I did not see that.
Okay, do you have a...
So I can go back to the video and just find that, send that to you and...
No, I'll listen to it again.
Get that noted. I'm sorry.
It's just, you know, so excited. No, it's fine. I mean, they're not supposed to be verbatim transcript of what's, what's in there, but yet they are the board's minutes. So if there's something that you want in there that was said, then I'll listen for it and put it in there. But again, they're not supposed to be an actual verbatim transcript of everything that transpired. Really, they're only supposed to have the actions. So really, don't need any of this explanation.
Okay.
Again, they're the board's minutes, so.
Melanie.
I don't have any.
The only thing I had, Lisa, was under the second for the nomination of chairman, it was Melanie and not Councilman Martin.
Oh, I apologize. I have auto text in there.
I figured that's what happened.
Yes, I will fix that, thank you.
That is it. If so, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
No, I'll have to bring them back to you without many changes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, though.
So are we ready for public comment? Anyone want to, we do not have a sign-up sheet. So does anyone have a comment to the board? Okay. Remind you, just give me your name and address.
I am Randy Mosley. I am not a resident, and Melanie told me. I had been on here for twenty years, and I've recently moved off the island. My address is six-six-one Burns Way, Bolivia. I have a business, a construction business, and have been doing business on the island for about twenty-five years. And Melanie reached out to me regarding this fill stuff, because I've had some experience with the town on that. And she sent me some of the changes, I think, that they're proposing.
Sir, could you restate your name for me again, please?
Randy Mosley, M-O-S-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I had an issue with the town on the very thing, putting in a retaining wall. It started out as a bulkhead, and they wanted to rename it a retaining wall mid-project, and we did. And then they said, well, you don't comply with the retaining wall. And the whole issue was, in their definition of the a foot above the road or the highest adjacent lot. You know, that's your level. And I said, well, I comply with that. Of course, they said, no, you don't. So I said, well, let's talk about this. And I go there, and I say, well, I'm well below the road, the crown of the road. I'm four feet below it with this fill, you know? They said, well, the adjacent lot, and the lots are up like this. You know, all the work I do, I work on the water, so they're bulkheads typically, and they're falling off to the water. And of course, this one did, and it, and I've got others like this, and I just hadn't even permitted them after this debacle I went through with them. But where the, where you get to the end of the wall, and you come back to grade, right? On the sides, on the property lines, and you fill, that's the whole point of the wall. Well, they're saying, I say, well, the highest adjacent lot, you know, we came off of this existing wall, matched that grade, came around, and came back down this property line. Of course, that property fell off, just like the one I was filling to give the people a backyard back there. And they're saying, oh, no. That's the adjacent lot, and they're pointing at the bottom of the hill down there. The lot probably rose six feet up to where the house was sitting, you know? And I said, well, surely we can split the difference or something. Nope, that's not the rule. It's the highest adjacent lot. I said, well, when I read highest adjacent lot, that's not what that's saying to me at all. But that's their interpretation, is what I was told. So I ended up going and getting a variance for that whole deal to make it work out. It was pretty frustrating. Like I said, I've got two or three projects right now, they're the exact same situation that I've just put on the back burner. So I hate to even go down there and have to fight again. That's my comments. I mean, somebody, you know, we just needed to find terms.
Okay.
I think.
Thank you.
When we get to that section. Probably so, yeah.
Anyone else? Seeing there is no one else, we will move on to old business, supplemental regulations. Okay, Lisa, which will be the best way, just going down line by line on these and discussing?
Yes, I think so. Or you could just go by the pa, first page and see if anybody has any suggestions for different languages on one of them. I'm looking at that page right here, there you have in your hand, that's a lot of red on that page, so it might be easier to go definition by definition on that one.
So the first one is seven-five docks, piers, and bulkheads.
Seven point two?
Seven point two.
Page three?
Yes. One over.
There you go.
We got her. All right, we've marked out the first paragraph and started in with new definitions. Structures twelve feet or less are exempt from detailed. Does anyone have any issues with this first page? Page three. June.
I have a...
Okay.
No, I don't. Go ahead.
Carrie?
Yes, under, just a clarification. We're now defining swimming pools under accessory structures. So, just, Matt, if you could help me understand the rationale behind our current ordinance, allowing them to be freestanding, not attached to homes, especially on the, on the ocean side. So they're, they're themselves in a deck, making them a freestanding structure, supposed to attach to the house. I'd just like to understand that a little bit better.
You mean, without a house at all, or...
The house is existing, and then a pool is put on a deck, say, behind the house, and, but it's not allowed to be attached to the house. What does that, what's the rationale behind that?
There's no regulation that says that it has to or does not have to be attached to the house in the zoning regulations. You may be running into KAMA or flood hazard prevention ordinances that deal with detached accessory versus something that's attached to the principal structure on the lot. But from a zoning standpoint, there's no delineation in here as to whether a pool has to be attached or detached. I think what you're, if you're running into a difference there, it's likely due to, especially on the oceanfront, KAMA regulations that deal with how much, you know, exposed decking and the attachments and things like that that you run into. But there's no, that I'm aware of, there's no regulation in the zoning in the UDO that says that a pool has to or does not have to be attached. Obviously, this board can make a recommendation if it wants to stipulate some language like that, one way or another. I mean, you run into a situation where someone actually has a big backyard, and their pool, and their pool apron is set back forty feet from the house, so how are you gonna actually connect those two things when it is like an in-ground pool? That's just a thought off the top of my head, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need to have any ordinance around that. Maybe Mr. Pershaw might be the best person to ask this question about why builders do that. Do you, do you know what I'm referring to?
I've seen it, but I'm not knowledgeable on it. We, we build on the north side of Oak Island Drive.
I think it is related to the KAMA regulations. But I can't recall exactly what it is. We could probably find out and come back and discuss it, but...
Yeah, I just don't, I don't see anything here in seven-two, seven dot two dot nine. You know, it's, that really addresses that from an ordinance perspective. When you can do it.
What, what type of reasoning or impact would you be looking to address by having a pool be attached or detached one way or another? I guess it's kind of the root question.
I'm just trying to understand why, because it's my understanding that, that there are some pools on the oceanfront that are on decks that are purposely not attached to the home. And I guess to Melanie's point, that's related to KAMA setbacks, maybe, or something?
The beds on patch, they're all like that.
Okay.
We can't have discussions.
Thank you.
If we're gonna take comment or stuff, I'm gonna have to come up to the podium, please, just so we can get you on the recording.
Well, we can move on. I just had a question, I just wanted to understand.
Thank you. And that is... Tim, do you have any? David?
No, sir.
Melanie?
On seven point two point nine point one. With regards to the setback for a swimming pool from any lot line shall equal the required setback for accessory structures in the district plus one foot for each foot over five feet of pool depth. Swimming pools are not required in the front yard area. With through lots. We technically define two front yard areas. I think we probably do have some currently that would be in what I would call the rear front yard area.
Excuse me?
Yes.
We changed the addresses on the like Dolphin to where it's on the Beach Drive, did we not? In one of the past meetings, make that, make that change?
I think we still have the the two front setbacks regardless of what the address...
So that, what you're talking about, they're, they're not in the, they're not in the front yard. That's a rear yard. What you run into, the problem is that, that you do have two fronts, front property lines and two front setbacks. That's what we've been trying to figure out how to clarify one way or another. But, so those pools, unless they're actually in that twenty-five-foot setback, if they're behind the house, if they're in the appropriate rear yard area, then they're not in a front yard area. I mean, we'd have, I could definitely bring you some examples to show you what that looks like. And there may, you know, I haven't been here for forever, so I don't know that there may be some that are in that twenty-five-foot setback that shouldn't be back there. But that, unless they're in that, so you have on a through lot, you have two front property lines, you have a twenty-five-foot setback off of both of them. You still have a front yard and a rear yard. But you have that, that setback area is twenty-five feet on both sides, because it is considered both front property lines. Whether you want to change that or make a recommendation to have something different in here, that, that's totally in the pleasure of the board, for sure. Or add a line related to through lots specifically.
Yeah, it's just, it's very confusing, as you have pointed out.
So currently, they're both labeled front yards?
No.
No?
You have a front yard and a rear yard, but you have, but both lines are considered front property lines on a through lot. But you do have a front yard and a rear yard. I agree, it's confusing.
So...
Is there any way that we could put those specific lots in a specific zone of its own that has those rules spelled out?
They're mostly, let me get mine.
They're not grouped with everything else?
Most of that stuff is essentially already in a pretty, well... I mean, we could definitely look at something like an overlay district. They're mostly in the R-seven zoning district, and there's not much R-seven outside of that beachfront area. So we could definitely look at something like a regulation that's specific to the R-seven. And you wouldn't really be affecting, you could have something that's specific for through lots in the R-seven zoning district or something like that. But if that's something the board wants us to explore, we can definitely work on it for you.
Does anybody else think that might would simplify it for property owners to help them understand? But it was sort of their own separate little category?
So Matt, you're saying that's R-seven? All we would have to do is say, an R-seven pools are not allowed on...
You can have specific regulations for specific zoning districts. Yes, sir.
So that would...
Narrow, you could even write in the language so it just says four through lots in this particular zoning district.
That would be the easiest thing to do and simplest.
Make it down even further, yeah.
That's the whole purpose of this exercise, make it as simple and easy to read and understand. So, pass-through lots would be off of, would be designated like Dolphin Drive and not Beach Drive?
I mean, if there's a through lot that touches beach on one side and dolphin on the other.
So Dolphin would be considered the back?
Right.
But it still has a front setback?
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Yeah, but do we want to change that there's a front setback in the front and the back?
When we posed that question to council related to changing that, they did not approve that text amendment that we recommended, so.
Okay, that's what I was thinking about. So that wasn't approved, so do we really need to go that way if council's already rejected that?
It's your recommendation. Make a change. This is the swimming pool regulations and accessory structure regulations that I could find throughout the ordinance, right? And we reorganized them and consolidated them into this section, which is part of what you're talking about, you're making it easier to read now. Should, should this stuff get approved eventually by Town Council, we can then process a further text amendment where we strip all that duplicative stuff that's elsewhere in the ordinance out and say, hey, we, you approved putting this in the supplemental regulations, we don't need it fifteen other places in the ordinance, we can take it all out. So the setback and yard requirement area and everything that's, that's in here is, is essentially what's found throughout the ordinance already. So you'd be taking on that additional, you know, policy consideration of what actually is the right area. If that's something the board wants to tackle now, you can. If you want to, you know, defer or wait for council feedback on it, that's totally at y'all's discretion. I didn't recommend anything additional, I'll put it that way.
I think, to Melanie's point, it's a little confusing on that one section. Which is the front and which is the rear? So do we want to make that a little bit clearer? And say which side's going to be recommended for pools and which side's going to be not allowed?
Well, the hard thing is, you know, you have some that have a driveway off of one road, and some that have a driveway off the other road, and...
Well, and honestly, it's up to the homeowner as far as how they design the lot, how they design the house, where the house sits. It makes most sense for the pool. So I think if we just leave it, and if they decide, when they build the house, this is going to be the front, this is going to be the back, then that's front and back.
But do you want a swimming pool on Beach Drive?
I wouldn't.
There are some.
Well, that's...
That's the ocean view and the south, the south sun side.
And that's up to them as far as how they want to design it when they build it.
There are some.
Leave that, I would leave that up to them as far as how they want to design it. And then they have to abide by front and rear from that point on.
I can tell you, I do have a through lot. And my driveway is off of Beach Drive, and the pool is in the back. But if I were developing that property today, I would definitely do it the other way around, because that's a rental property that I have. Backing out of my own driveway onto Beach Drive in the summertime, you know, thank goodness I get the beep 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 that there's a bicyclist coming, because I probably would have run some people over by now if it wasn't for that.
I think we...
I would take the safe option, but...
My recommendation would be to leave it as is and let the homeowner decide which one they want to use as front and back. And then they can design it as they wish.
And also, I think part of the impetus of this revision and update of the UDO and the various ordinance is to simplify for the development staff to be able to administer, right? So Matt, is this okay for you and staff?
Yeah, I mean, it's what we're doing now.
Okay. Okay, just want to make sure.
I've already made all the points about trying to explain it and do all that stuff in previous planning, ward, and town council meetings, so I won't go through all that again.
So on this, sorry, just backing up one, on accessory structures generally. Matt, we're in here, we, I thought we had said as a town, we didn't want accessory structures in the front yard area. Does it say, where, point me in here, I've, I've looked at it until I keep missing that, I don't see that anymore.
Yes, in here somewhere, I just read it.
accessory bu, building shall not extend beyond the front edge of the principal building or beyond the minimum front building line, whichever is greater. So that would mean, if you build your house here, this is your principal structure, you can't extend your accessory building in front of that.
So I know we've had issues with that, right, from people in the community, so do we think that's perfectly clear?
I mean, you could...
As to where accessory structures are allowed?
That, that's pretty clear for staff on our end, but if you want to add another line or a sentence, I'm, I'm just here for your feedback and suggestions today, so whatever y'all want to do.
I think that's pretty clear.
Well, we certainly had somebody come and request variances multiple times, right?
Well, I mean, somebody requesting a variance, whether they, that's, whether they understand the ordinance or not, they can request a variance, you know, to, to move that dimensional standard one way or another.
All right, if we feel it's clear, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure there's not a lack of clarity on it.
We're good with page three. Page four. June, is there anything on that that's...
No, sir.
Carrie?
No.
Tim? David?
So Section seven point five, Regulations of Docks, Piers, Bulkheads, and Living Shorelines. The construction of docks, bulkheads, living shorelines, and piers shall be governed by the applicable U.S. Corps of Engineers and Coastal Area Management Act. So, once they issue that permit for that bulkhead, that's their jurisdiction. There's a thirty-foot line and a seventy-five-foot line. So how, how is the town getting involved in that fill of the course jurisdiction or KAMA's?
Well, I mean, that's a great question. What we are looking at is the, as far as I'm aware, a bulkhead is a water-dependent structure, right? So it has water on one side and dirt on the other, whereas a retaining wall has land on either side. So you have to, once again, I don't review these permits every day, but the, the difference is when you start extending that on to what would no longer be considered a bulkhead, but at some point, it becomes a retaining wall, because it's not a water-dependent structure anymore. And I, I agree, it's something fill, bulkheads, retaining walls, the stuff that, you know, we, we have to go through a lot here in the town. And the retain, so I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but in the retaining wall section in here, that's our current fill ordinance. Just moved into the retaining wall section to make it clear that this applies to someone who's wanting to put up a retaining wall. Once again, you know, the, the structure itself, you can put up a retaining wall and engineer it in a way that you don't even, if it's engineered properly, you don't have to put anything behind it, you can just have it. And say, I just want a retaining wall here to catch dirt as it, you know, whatever moves along the property. But, you know, if you, if you guys want to tackle how to address fill specifically in the ordinance, you know, it's, like I said, it's something we deal with daily, you know? The move here was to put our existing, right now, our fill regulations are in a, in a definition, which you don't want to put a regulation in a definition, you want it in a section that actually covers the regulations of a thing. So this just moves those somewhere else. If the board, in reviewing that, says we want to, you know, adjust how to regulate fill or, or look at fill or, you know, define these terms appropriately, however you want to do it, you know? Once again, I'm here for your feedback and suggestions today, so...
I mean, just personally, I would believe that the town should stay out of that jurisdiction. The bulkhead is parallel to the water, and then its return walls are actually structural to that. The bulkhead is parallel to the water and then its return walls are actually structural to that bulkhead for stability. And then the fill behind it is structural because as the water rises, you need the fill behind it to keep it balanced. If you take the fill out, which is typically just a triangle, when you take, if you, if he's not, if this person isn't allowed to fill this, and when the water rises, the bulkhead bends and comes in. So I would believe that the town should just let the core and CAMA handle that completely, it's in their jurisdiction. You, you have to have the return walls for structural, I would believe. And you have to have the fill in that triangular area, which becomes somewhat structural also because it is what is helping that wall hold its stability.
So could we just say, on the water side, the CAMA regulations would dictate fill?
Yeah, I think, I think one good way to address what we're trying to approach here is, you know, if it's a, something that's, requires a CAMA permit or a U S Corps of Engineers permit, that there's bulkheads and maybe a line like required return walls. Because what you don't want to do is have a, a property owner come in and say, well, my return wall runs from the water to the front of my property and so.
Yeah.
That's all within the thing, but, you know, we're getting outside of the bounds of what's reasonable at that point. I can definitely check with our CAMA LPO as far as when and what applies and probably write something in there to say that, you know, if this is a, a bulkhead that's permitted properly by CAMA and a required return wall or something like that, that, like Mr. Perser's saying, if that's what the board wants to recommend, you know, to clarify it, because it, you know, it's, once again, making it easier on everybody, you know, where, where does, where does the required return wall stop? And the person who wants a, a hundred-foot retaining wall, you know, along the side of the property begin, you know what I mean? I think that's, we got to figure out what that line is appropriately, one way or another, to make sure that it's clear for everybody, you know?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on bulkheads by any means, but I would believe that the return wall, the higher the wall is from 1.9 above sea level, the higher that is freestanding, then the longer the wall would need to be returned. So if it's 10 feet out of the ground, you may need 15, 20 feet of a return wall for structural.
You might.
Rigidity. If it's three feet out of, out of the ground, you may only need six feet.
That's right, yeah, certainly makes sense, and I, I mean, yeah, it's something that could be clarified and could be improved in some way, right?
And then from that point forward, then that would turn into a retaining wall. Because it, it wouldn't be required structurally anymore.
But couldn't those return walls affect neighboring property theoretically?
I think that's what you wanted.
But.
Well, what do you mean, I mean, if it's on the other person's property, how's it going to affect?
It's, 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 there's a plus and a minus to it, I think it, it, it saves erosion, it saves property, so there may be a visual impact, but I don't think it's even 50% negative, I think there's added protection there. And then there's protection to our wetlands and waterway that bulkheads give also from erosion, which is very crucial.
Yeah, there just need to be consideration on runoff and stormwater impacts, because it seemed like water could like run over those return walls onto the neighboring property and create some kind of swell, you know?
Well, you're already required to capture your runoff, so.
And most of the areas where bulkheads go, the, the land is already in complete erosion and the bulkhead is a complete positive, I would say.
Yeah.
There's, there's undermining from, from wake, there's erosion from storms, typically bulkheads, I, I think it's even in the, in some of the CAMA stuff that a bulkhead is a favorable thing for a wetland slash waterway or passageway.
But if your neighbor puts up a bulkhead and I own the lot next door and I don't have a bulkhead, yes, there's going to be, it's going to change all the way the water hits my property, but then you get into, you can't protect everybody. I mean, I, I hate to say it, but, you know, if you're worried about your property, you better build your own bulkhead.
You're right.
See, anytime you put a hardened structure out there in the water, it's going to change how the properties around it that also aren't hardened.
Yep.
Erode, you know, when you talk about groynes and jetties and, you know, Army Corps, my parents have a creek in the backyard and the Army Corps won't let them put riprap in it because it's going to mess up the guy next to him as that water hits the rock and it accelerates down the creek, it changes the creek further down. So, I mean, it, it is something to worry about, but once again, it's, you know, I'm just here for your feedback, if you want to address it some way and there's a consensus, then, you know, we'll work on it.
So what would be a good clarification on that as far as delineation between retaining wall and bulkhead?
Uh, let me get with our CAMA LPO and talk with her a little bit about, you know, what goes in what area. It may be that, you know, if it's in a certain CAMA setback area, you know, that might be reasonable. I can also talk with our chief building official to get any feedback that he might have on, you know, what's a reasonable determination between a bulkhead and a retaining wall, maybe define, it might just be a definition of those terms that accomplishes what we want to do here.
Just putting those two definitions on that one section, I think would clarify that whole section.
Yeah, but the CAMA permit, if they tell you how big to build a bulkhead, they should tell you how far.
I don't think the CAMA, I mean, I, I'll have to talk with her, but I don't think CAMA necessarily gets involved with the size of the bulkhead. They talk about the placement of the bulkhead within the setback area.
Okay.
They're not going to engineer it for you.
No.
Right.
No. We got enough work already.
They did.
Okay, are we good with Matt getting us two definitions from CAMA? Okay, home occupation, 7.7.
I have one thing.
Okay.
7.2, 0.9, 0.4, all mechanical equipment associated with pool maintenance shall be located at a minimum of five feet from the property line. On the side, if you have an eight-foot setback, that only leaves you three feet for your pool equipment. We just put in a pool and had, the town was questioning how far out the pool pump was and the pool guy explained to us that if you ever have to replace parts inside of it, you have to take it off to the back. So you have to have a certain amount of space between the house and the pump itself, so I was just going to suggest maybe four feet from the property line. That would give four feet for the pool pump and the little bit of space to work in behind it. Do you think four feet would be enough?
Yeah, well, I mean, currently with this, five feet, that gives you from the edge of your house, three feet on most side setbacks, eight foot. A lot of pool equipment won't even fit in three feet. You know, the, the size of the pool determines how big the sound filter is and, and the pad is for the pump and so forth, so I would believe that would need to be reduced also.
Okay, this is home occupations on 7.7. Home occupations, 7.7.
I think.
Ms. Moore went back up to 7.2, not 9.
7.2, 0.9, 0.4, asking to change the minimum of five feet to four feet.
I mean, I have a question for y'all, I don't have a pool. Why four feet?
Yeah.
It just gives you, it would give you another foot, or, I mean, the more the merrier, I think for everybody, but, you know, where does the town want it to be? I know currently they want all HVAC units one foot off of the house.
Yeah.
I'm not sure for ultimately what purpose, unless it's, you know, trying to get access to a rear yard. But you're allowed to put a fence all the way across the eight-foot side setback, but you're not allowed to put HVAC unit more than a foot away from the house.
And you can put a fence up around your house, but you have to have your accessory buildings so far away from the property line, so then you have this big space between your building and your fence.
I think the issue with HVAC units is the noise, trying to keep, minimize that from the neighbor.
Right.
I mean, how much noise, five foot to three foot is really going to make a difference? Like I said, I don't know, I don't have a pool, I don't know how loud it.
There's more noise coming from what's going on in the pool.
Because, I mean, we're just moving equipment and if somebody needs to get by, I know it'd be a pain, but you can always pick the equipment up and move it.
Right. Yeah, pool pumps typically aren't very loud.
No.
Pressures are.
Are louder than pumps.
Matt, you want to comment, where do you think the five feet comes, comes from?
Most of our allowances, for a long time, were, were only three feet. The town council did, and planning board recommended a, a change for some mechanical equipment outside stairways to four feet. That they could extend to more than four feet into a required setback, which would be on an eight-foot side, like we're talking about here, would leave four feet remaining. I mean, different jurisdictions look at it a lot of different ways, I worked in jurisdictions that didn't apply setbacks to mechanical equipment at all. I've worked on ones that were like this, had certain setbacks required of them, certainly noise. You know, anytime, a, a lot of times when you run into building separation, you're looking at fire requirements. Now, whether that's applicable to, you know, something mechanical or not, I'm not really a, a fire code expert, whether we want to, you know, keep my HVAC 10 feet from the other guy's HVAC, that's kind of beyond the scope of what I'm looking at here, but there is, like I said, other, other mechanical equipment in the ordinance that is allowed to extend no more than four feet into a side setback yard, so it would at least be consistent if nothing else, if you changed this to, to four feet as well.
Five to four?
Yeah, that's right.
Lisa, do we need a motion for the five to four?
Um, I think just consensus is fine on this because, Matt, are you going to bring clean copies back to them for formal approval, or do you want them to?
Yeah, at the, at the very end, once we make our way through everything, you have clean copies and everything.
Everyone good with that section? Uh, 7.7, home occupations. Gene, any, Carrie? Tim? David? We are good on 7.7. Uh, retaining walls, 7.8.
Stuff we just talked about.
We just talked.
Funny how this hall gets wrapped up together.
We'll get it all wrapped up.
I mean, but, I, I know we've talked about looking at the definitions and looking at defining and making sure that all the regulations for bulkheads versus retaining walls are right. But I would ask if there's any feedback y'all have towards the fill ordinance itself that needs to be clarified. Once again, this is just taking what's in the, what's in our ordinance now under the fill definition and putting it into this section. But if there's adjustments that y'all, or suggestions you think need to be made, certainly this would be a good time to, to talk about them. If not, that's fine, too.
Well, to address Mr. Mosley's concern, what is the definition of highest adjacent, highest point on adjacent lot?
It doesn't say highest point, it says the highest adjacent lot, I think that's what the, the question comes down to is, on the one hand, if you take it as the highest point on the highest adjacent lot, well, if, let's say my neighbor's lot and we go way down and I say, well, I want to fill my entire lot to the highest point on his adjacent lot, so I want my whole lot, you know, that was like this, to now be like this for the entirety. When we, when we look at it internally for the highest adjacent lot, we look at the highest elevations on either side as they contour, right? And say, okay, what's the highest point on this side, what's the highest point on that side? But you still have to try to match those contours as it goes back, so you don't run into a situation where somebody has got a steep drop in the back maybe, and you say, okay, well, I'm going to pick the highest point up here and lift my entire lot like this. And now I've got two lots on either side that still point down, but I'm 10 or 15, I'm being exaggerating here obviously, but 15 feet higher than those other two lots as they curve down.
But couldn't it?
So we match it to the highest adjacent lot as it, as it contours back into the property. So you may be higher than this guy on the other side, but you should be matching the contour of that highest adjacent lot as well. You may be able to fill it some, but, once again, it, you know, it's a, a difference in how, you know, one person looks at and says, this, the highest adjacent lot is here and it's at this point on this adjacent lot, versus looking at the lot in total as it goes back on the property.
Okay, so that could vary by inspector by inspector?
Uh, no, we get, uh, we should get elevations in.
Okay.
Uh, and cross-sections in to look at what's the highest point, if there's ever a question about this, as it comes up. And I'm sure Mr. Perser can speak, we go through that regularly where we have to go in and get elevations as they go down the property lines and say, okay, it's five feet over here, four feet over here, this is the highest, it's, you know, this foot over here, you know, and look at it as it goes back on the property usually, is what we're looking at.
Okay, but should we define that to make, is there, is there a way to define that?
So you could, you could define it like I just said, it depends on what you want to do, you can say, okay, we want to match the, say, instead of saying the highest adjacent lot, say the, the cur, you know, the slope of the highest adjacent lot, you could, if you want to make it a point, you can say the point on the highest adjacent lot, I mean, it depends on. But either way, you have ramifications for how much fill you do or don't allow on a piece of property, because one, one, if you pick a point, that could end up being a lot more than trying to match a slope on the other side. But yeah, I mean, it, it, right now, we're using the property as a whole, if you want to do a point, you can, but like I said, that, that might have some other implications.
Matching the slope makes more sense than a point.
Well, personally, I have a lot that slopes down to the back and I did build a, a couple of retaining walls and tapered it down because I wanted the back part of my lot to remain natural. The property to one side had already been developed and there is a high wall on, on that side and that was already there when I developed my property. So I was, that was what I chose to do. The other side has now been developed and, and they have made, you know, themselves one, one flat lot and theirs is also higher than mine. I'm fine with it, what, what is the problem with that? I got to choose what I wanted to do on my lot. This, this family did and this family did, so why are we saying that they only can do what I did?
Well, that's true, too.
I personally think the fill ordinance needs a ton of work. Nobody wants to build a house on a lot that's sloping from side to side. The remaining lots on the island are going to be very challenging when it comes to fill. You know, when you, when you look at three lots and you're at, let's just say, an elevation of one and then this lot is anywhere and this lot is at elevation of zero. You know, they should be able to fill to an elevation of .5, which is half, you know? You know, that way, this one is, they can retain their water and this one can retain their water. You know, the highest adjacent lot, I mean, that, that could turn out disastrous, you know, if you're, this guy's at a five and this guy's at a zero or, or a two and this guy's at a zero, if you go to the highest adjacent lot and fill level across, you've got, you've got quite a drop right there. You know? So I mean, you know, it, it should be a, I would believe a, a safe way would be a midpoint between the two lots. Unless you had a engineered stormwater, you know, a plan engineered by a civil engineer.
Yeah.
You know, showing that water will not runoff onto the next guy.
Yeah, and certainly an average of the two could be something that could be written into the ordinance, you know? And we've also kind of danced around this, you know, problem of, you know, engineering and stormwater requirements, et cetera, that plays into all this. Cause certainly even if you come in and fill, you may present that plan to the stormwater administrator for the town and say, well, that doesn't work for our stormwater standards. So you need to do something different. So I do think you wanna, one, you wanna at least condition it on, on that so that you're not creating a stormwater runoff problem. But certainly if there's a, I mean, like I said, average highest adjacent, you know? Whatever seems reasonable.
So. Like you're saying, if we did the average of the two adjacent lots. As highest point for lot being developed. That way it'd protect the lowest, but yet you still get some fill to work in.
Well, are we talking about? The highest point on the adjacent lot or?
Highest point or slope?
Well, the, it, it should be the.
And where's the road and?
The average elevation.
A- average elevation on the two adjacent lots.
Of, um. What's the, uh? Without excessive drop. I mean, you, you know, I, I know of a lot right now that is, you know, at elevation of seven on the front. Eight, ten feet back, ten, twenty feet back, and then it just starts, it's, it's just a straight down slope. You can't, if you add that into the equation, then that's gonna bring you actually lower than the other one. So you know, it should be a, a midpoint between the two lots. Not higher than one foot above the crown of the road. And, and go from there would be a good starting point.
We can write that in there. Um, and, and to your point about lots that have crazy elevations. We do have something in the ordinance now that if you have, have a drastic elevation in there. That you can fill, uh, more than one foot. But, uh, what we don't have, one, I did add something to this, uh, ordinance, now that I'm looking at and we're talking about this specific. There wasn't really like a, a way to say what a drastic elevation is. So we did add a sentence that, um, if you're gonna say I have a drastic elevation on my property, you need a, a sealed signed letter from a surveyor or design professional. That says that, hey, this lot has a drastic elevation and it, and that's why they're asking for this fill to essentially, to help Mr. Perser out. Uh, or to help anybody who's dealing with a lot with crazy, you know, elevation changes. We had accepted that in the past, but I just wanted to make it clear in the ordinance that that's what you needed. If you're gonna say my lot has a drastic elevation change in it, you know, it goes down. You know, maybe it's sloped sideways where it's, you know, a ten foot drop from one side of a lot to the other. Uh, that might make it pretty hard to, you know, build a house or something like that.
And you're taking that midpoint, that gives the higher lot. An opportunity to balance his lot without purchasing dirt. Because if, you know, if he's sloping like this, then he can take from the high side to, to level out. So that works well on that aspect.
Can I just? Throw this out as an example because, you know, some of these lots have come up for sale. You know, on the, the big hill, the cable hill. I mean, they're, you know, you've got. You've got land that's really, really high. And then down on the western part. It's a hole. What you're actually looking at treetops. So, you know, I really think ultimately the best thing would be for it all to be leveled out and planned together. So there could be some continuity there. Uh, it's probably not how it's going to go because there are multiple different owners. But I guess, you know, that area is really gonna be affected by what we decide. So we really need to. Think it through and, you know, I would suggest that maybe if we talk about it next month and if we could have Steve and. Our Kama person here and maybe even Rick to give us some stormwater. Input. I mean, it's a lot of complicated things that we're. You know, and, and we, it's one of the reasons why I asked Randy to come because, you know, David obviously has more qualifications to consider these things than the rest of us. But I feel like we need some, some people.
And this has changed, I'll say, th- this is one ordinance that has changed over the years. At one point it was, uh, I know it was, right now it's. One foot over the crown of the road or either, even with the highest adjacent lot, whichever is less. At one point it was whichever is greater, I think. You know? So it, it has moved around a little bit because that might be a pretty big change, you know, if you have to pick from the lesser. Go from picking the greater of the two to the lesser of the two. So it's definitely something that we could continue to work with, I think. And that, there's other things to consider too, you, you know, not only that, not only Kama, not only stormwater. The flood hazard impact implications, whether you fill or whether you don't fill. You know, one of the higher flood prevention standards is to not allow fill in the special flood hazard area. Because it affects, you know, where that water goes. If you, if you have a lot that's down here and now you filled it up here, well, that water's gonna go somewhere else. So it's definitely interrelated with a lot of different regulatory, uh, structures in place. And something we should probably can talk about, uh, more as we go through this. But certainly anything y'all want us to consider, let it fly and we'll take a look at it.
I do have a couple of questions. Seven point eight point two, all retaining walls shall require a zoning permit? What exactly is a zoning permit?
Uh, what we call our land development permits or qualifies our zoning permits.
So just a development permit, okay. Um, and then on the next one. The amount of fill added to a lot will be no greater than one foot. But then on the next line, the next section, seven point eight point four, fill greater than one foot. So.
Okay, so.
I feel like these are.
You can fill to, it doesn't say that you're limited to one foot of fill. It says that the fill you're allowed is limited to one foot over the crown of the road. You might need three feet of fill to meet that one foot over the crown of the road, or you might need three feet of fill to meet the highest adjacent lot. So in those instances where you're meeting that height that you can fill to. If you have to fill more than one foot to meet that. That's when you need that, uh, engineered fill plan for stabilization in stormwater. So if you're meeting that standard and you only have to fill six inches to meet, you know, whatever height standard you can go to. Then you don't need that engineered plan for stabilization. And really what you're, you have to do a stormwater plan on every house. So that's not a big deal what you run. The big deal is to engineer stabilization plan to make sure that, you know, that dirt's not gonna, you know, just. Just compacted properly. It's not gonna run off, you know, on the adjacent properties, et cetera.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna ask and, and will not be greater than is necessary to meet the health department requirements? Without septic. What do we need a health department?
Where are you looking at that at?
Seven point eight point three. I mean, I'm just.
I mean, you can strike that out if you want to, but it doesn't really.
I mean, is there any?
If they're not, if the, if there's a requirement for the health department to look at that doesn't apply, you know?
I, I just can't think of a requirement for the health department to have a say about a retaining wall.
Aren't there still houses on septic tanks?
There shouldn't be.
Uh, right, there shouldn't be to my knowledge, whether there are or not, that, uh, I'm not at every house every day making sure that they're using their sewer system. They're supposed to and not hooked into a.
I mean, that's probably why it's there. If you put in there years ago, just for.
Right, exactly.
For that, but.
That, that's a relic from when there were. It's not a sewer system, obviously, or people were still on septic. As far as whether there's properties that are illegally still hooked up to a septic tank or not. You know, I can't speak to something like that.
You never know.
So, so, so just so that. Everybody hears under the understanding. So if a individual. Wants to build a house currently and he, he or she. Clears a lot, what is the procedure to add fill? To the lot to get it to? One foot above the crown of the road in a situation that is less than three feet where it does not require. A civil guy. Designed the compaction ratio.
Uh, you come in and fill out a land development permit, and if you're gonna do fill, you need to show me where that fill is and what the elevations are before and after. As well as the, uh, elevations on the adjacent properties. Cause we have to make sure that you're either meeting the standard of. One foot over the high, one foot over the crown of the road or highest adjacent lot. So if you're gonna fill, we need to be able to check that standard. So when you come and do your development permit, uh, it says on development permit application, you're supposed to show areas where you're adding fill already. So if you don't put any fill on there, we're gonna assume you're not putting any fill on there cause you're not showing me any. Uh, if you are putting fill on there, you need to show where the fill is gonna be added and what the pre and post elevations are as well as those. Those adjacent property elevation so that we know that you're meeting that standard in the ordinance.
But that actually requires a fill permit with a fill permit fee, right? Isn't it like a two hundred, two hundred and fifty hour fee?
I can definitely take a look at the fee schedule for you.
Right. And then. So, you know, a lot of people have reached out and said that the, the current fill permit. It's a fee to get it, but it's not taking into account for what was actually on site. So, you know, when a, when a builder clears a lot, he's removing twelve inches, six to twelve inches of elevation in root mat. But then when they go to put that dirt back, which technically isn't fill because it was there before, then they're being penalized for that.
Well, I mean, that may be the case, but you need to write something into the ordinance that says that you're allotted X amount or, uh, you know, it. I can't go back and say, oh, well, this lot was twelve inch, without evidence, I can't go back and say, oh, this lot was twelve inches higher. Before they cleared out all of this root mat or whatever material you're removing from the property. I don't know that until someone actually presents it to me as a part of the permit.
And then the, the preliminary site plan, it shows elevations midpoint of lot, down left side of lot, down right side of lot. Now, I, I believe currently you're allowed to put one. Dump truck load of dirt on the lot without.
That's not in this ordinance.
Yes, and that's what I'm, I'm not seeing that either. That's where I'm trying to make sure that I can go back and report, you know, a clean truth of the matter.
We need to write in allowance for the clearing of roots. And then allowance for dirt to fill that back in.
That's it. So you're allowed, you're allowed to take it back to original elevation. Um, you know, cause it takes a lot of dirt to fill in.
Oh, yeah.
Where you pull out trees. And then all the root mat. I mean, if you take a, if you take a sixty, six hundred square foot lot. And let's just say you lose. Which it should not be a full sixty, six hundred feet. Let's say, let's say it's forty five hundred square feet. Take about seven.
Truckloads.
Truckloads to get it back. To where it was at six inches of removal.
So that needs to be put into it.
The what?
That you're allowed to take it back to its original elevation.
Still have to know what that, they still have to do the both beginning.
You'll still have to do the elevation to begin with.
Showing the elevations.
At current and then what it is after the fill to match up with what it was before.
What it was, right, okay.
And I have one more.
Uh, what, I wanna just make a comment on that. I'm, I'm not sure that. I think maybe the thinking would be that root mat and things like that of a natural, uh, material is probably. Helpful for stormwater and water saturation, more so than just putting a whole bunch of sand back on a lot. So that may have been the thinking about that, is that we need to think about taking so much root mat and natural material off a lot. And then just adding back a bunch of sand.
Right.
I mean, I'm think, just thinking that might be.
And, and I reduced the calculation down to forty two hundred feet instead of a full sixty, six hundred square foot of, of lot area.
Because you're gonna have to take that out to put in the stormwater, to put in the.
Driveway.
Driveway, the.
The home.
All of that's gonna have to come out just to put that in.
Yeah, but what I don't wanna run into here is. Uh, somebody comes in and does this work and doesn't get the pre-elevations and then comes back after and says, well, I took six inches of dirt out of here. I need to be able to put it back. Well, I don't know what, whether that's true, whether it's not true, whether that happened, how much you took out, et cetera.
You have to show that it was there.
Need to be clear that it needs to be shown pre any of that site work in order to have something like that.
Just as a point of order, I'd like us to stay on track because we're talking about retaining walls and. But it's a good question. I get it. I totally get it. Fuel's an issue. I totally get it. But let's stay on track and resolve what we've got here, if, if we may.
So I just have one more issue, seven point eight point six. Retaining walls and fills shall be permitted within the building envelope.
So. This doesn't exclude you from putting it outside of the building envelope. What, what this is trying to address is. You know, we all know what the building envelope is. It's the area of the lot that's not within the setback area, right? You can build a block wall on that piece of property that's ten feet tall and fill it in, right? And that's fill in that property, but. It's still the same as if you were building a block elevation or putting your house up ten feet tall. What this is trying to avoid is an instance where someone comes in and builds in that area and builds a retaining wall and fills it in with dirt. And then tries to measure the height of the structure from where they filled into and said, oh, well, I've. Got these retaining walls that I'm allowed to put in. I'm filling in where I'm allowed to put in. Now the height of my lot is here when it was down here before. So you're make, so now you've got thirty five foot from this higher point where you're putting that retaining wall in the building footprint. Which is, could be pretty significant elevation change versus our height allowance of thirty five or forty one. I mean, essentially. If you do something like that, you've, you know, raised your structure up an additional whatever feet. What this is trying to address is making sure that if you do that, we're gonna measure the height of everything from the lowest adjacent grade. If you've built your retaining walls here and you filled it in here. You're not gonna measure the height of that structure from up here. You're gonna measure it from the lowest adjacent grade down here because you've essentially filled that lot up. Uh, in order to build higher on the lot. Now, if that's something you guys, you know, wanna go one way or another.
Adjacent grade you're.
Lowest adjacent grade is a, a standard where it's, if you have a structure that is literally, here's the low part, here's the high part. Lowest adjacent grade is the low part beside whatever you build.
I think what's trying to be stopped is Fifty Eighth Street.
Yeah, or right down from where I live, they came in and put like twenty some trucks loaded with dirt, built a house and it went way higher than. It was initially supposed to be.
Yeah, because they've set it back into that building envelope area where you're allowed to construct and allowed to build. And there's not a standard for where you measure that structure from. Now it's getting made, you know, there's a potential that it'd be measured from the top of that area instead of the bottom of that area.
So it would be measured from the, the adjacent property owner's lot, correct?
Well, if this is, say this is your retaining wall. This is the high side, this is the low side. We measure it from the low side down here and say, okay, your thirty five foot building height starts here and not up here. And the idea is to keep somebody from building sick, well, if, it doesn't make sense to have a thirty five foot building height requirement. Allow somebody to fill a lot five to ten feet and then build thirty five feet up from that.
That's exactly.
Is sloping or if your lot is down in the hole.
It wouldn't prevent you from fixing any of that problem, no ma'am. They'll prevent you from doing this, taking advantage of that building envelope area where you're allowed to improve. Build structural, uh, anything like that and fill that further than these requirements. Because it's in that building footprint area. So you go up even higher than that because you're in the building footprint and then you go up from that. So you get essentially the double dip.
Yeah.
Because you've filled into the minimum fill requirements of the ordinance. You said, okay, this is the building envelope. I'm gonna put some walls in here, which I'm allowed to do because it's in the building envelope. I'm gonna fill that in and then I'm gonna build a house on top of that. And now I've got a, a building that's even higher than would be allowed normally if it were on pylons on that.
Yeah.
Fill grade that we've got down here.
That's the way it should be measured.
Okay.
If I could, um, just to go back to, I think, conversation on seven dot eight dot three. Are, are we suggesting that staff bring us back? The amount of fill added to a lot will be no greater than one foot above the crown of the road or even with the average elevation of the two adjacent lots? Is that what we're asking them to bring us back?
Oh, yes.
I just wanna, I wanna get it clarified for, for Matt and for Lisa.
Well, can I ask? I mean, so does that mean you gotta get a topographical survey of both neighbors? I mean, so does that mean you gotta get a topographical survey of both neighbors' lots?
Yeah, you have to.
And have the right to do that.
You have to, if you're going to do fill, you have to show me that now. You have to show me the, the, on your property lines, how those lots slope. So I can figure out whether you're matching that or not.
The property line.
Yeah, that's right. No, I'm not going ten feet. No, no.
Okay.
If you need, if you need to do something like that, because maybe there's a topographical problem or something like that. You probably go to the board of adjustment and say, hey, here's my, here's my problem that the ordinance doesn't allow me to address. And they can take that into consideration, uh, per the standards of the ordinance.
Are we making that request or are we leaving it as is with, uh, the one foot above the crown of the road or even with the highest adjacent lot? Versus the average elevation of the two adjacent lots.
Yeah, I mean, average, average makes sense. And that's all the way through the lot from start to, to the back. Now, obviously, if the lot is. If, if this lot is, you know, you know, here, here's another problem. You know, if you've got three lots here that are. This lot's ten feet above the crown of the road and this lot's eight feet above the crown of the road and this one's six feet above the crown of the road. Then the fill, the, uh, the fill option would change. Because they all have the option to balance and fill and be well above the one foot of the crown of the road. You know, that's, that's why it's so challenging because what fits for most doesn't fit for all.
Yeah.
And what fits for some doesn't fit for others.
Matt, do you think it'd be practical to talk with some Steve Edwards or some other folks in development just to see if that, if that makes sense from you guys' staff perspective?
Yeah, if y'all want to.
The average of, average elevation of two, let, I mean, let's just do a sanity check with staff and just make sure it works, right?
I think that's a good idea because.
And, and Steve and I have talked about fill ad nauseam. I'll put it that way. So.
I'm sure.
I'm pretty well aware of his thoughts on it, but I'll check in with him for sure.
No, nobody should be forced to build in a hole. Whether it's above the crown of the road or just in between two higher adjacent lots.
Exactly.
Okay, but if you buy a lot that you knows in a hole. Are you expecting the town to allow you to build it? There are unbuildable lots all over everywhere.
It's still buildable.
Well, that, that's true.
Well, build it in a hole then.
That was sort of my point with like the lower part of the cable property. So if you're the first one in the block to develop your lot and. All of your lots are below the road. Does that mean that because your neighbor is down in the hole? Cause it's not developed yet and this one is down in the hole because it's not developed yet that you also have to put your house down in a hole?
Well, I mean, that's, that's why you get, that's why you get an attorney and figure it out.
Above the crown of the road.
The one foot over the crown of the road.
But, but what you don't want is people that are eight, ten feet above the crown of the road, trying to level out up at that height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They should balance and take their fill that's already on site and balance out.
And balance that, their own lot out.
It's tough, Jean.
Yeah.
It is, it's a sticky problem.
Yeah, at that point, the health department could come back in. Because, I mean, you, I mean, it could be. Insects, I mean, it, it could, it could be, become a health department issue.
Let, uh, let me get some feedback and I'll come back to you guys.
Thank you.
So we can just keep this moving. We've talked a little bit. I think we've reached the end of our discussion.
We've reached the end of this. Let's, uh, Matt's got his notes. He's going to come back to us on. Feedback. Seven point nine satellite dishes and antennas. The only thing marked out is. If possible, uh. Page six. Jean, do you have any comments on page six? Let's go.
No, sir.
Let's do the whole page since it's, nothing's really. Okay, Carrie?
I'm just curious as to why we struck shall be hidden from view of the public right of way.
Define what hidden from view from the public right of way means and I'll leave it in there.
But if it's not in the front yard, it can't be in the public right of way, can it?
Well, hidden from view from the public right of way, if you guys want a specific buffer standard or a specific fence standard or something like that, it needs to be written into the ordinance.
Yes, it is. If it's on the side.
Because that first part, if possible, what's possible, a lot of things could be possible if you have enough money. Uh, and then, and shall be hidden from view, like these aren't well-defined terms in the ordinance. If you want a specific screen or a specific fence or. Higher buffer requirement, you need to put that into the ordinance.
No, I mean, I'm not debating it if it shouldn't come out. I'm just saying, I just was curious, but that makes sense. If you can't enforce it and administer it.
There's no sense putting it in there.
Right, okay.
I can see it from this corner when I'm standing.
Okay, that's it.
Tim?
I mean, you look, you, you could, you could be a, I'll go ahead. Just thinking, if it was a corner lot, there would be no way of putting one in that wasn't visible, sir.
Valid point.
Yeah.
I think we probably have about two more years of satellite dishes. They'll be taking them to the mountains and sliding down the hill.
Melvin? All right, we're good on page six. Page seven.
No, sir, don't have any.
Carrie?
Nope, all good.
Tim? David? I'm good. Uh, page eight, private clubs or lodges? Jean?
No, sir.
Nope.
Tim? David? On page eight.
That's page six.
Page eight.
I'm looking here. Okay, okay. All right, we've got two page numbers on there.
Two different page numbers on.
We've got a page six, eleven, and then eight.
Okay, page nine, we are up to seven point two, three, four walkways, sidewalks. And walls and fences. Jean?
Just one question on the seven point two, three point five.
Yes.
Do we have to define opaque?
Uh, I don't think so. You certainly can, um. I mean, opaque's a, a common term for something that doesn't allow visible light to pass through it.
I just want to make sure because.
Yeah.
Carrie? Tim?
Wait, are we, are you doing the whole page?
Yes, doing the whole page.
Cause walls and, walls and fences clearly are going to be a good conversation.
Okay.
Also.
All right, Carrie, walls and fences.
Uh, let's see. Okay, just my only question and Matt, I know we've visited this multiple times before, but are, are we clear for the public on through lots? And fences and walls?
I think it's clear.
And do what we have here, does it clarify that fully for the benefit of our community and our citizens?
These are the wall and fence standards that are in the ordinance right now and so we know how to apply what we have right now.
Okay.
We know what, what applies where. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And so you feel very comfortable from a staff perspective and.
I'm comfortable enforcing it.
Okay, thank you.
David, I'm at. Tim?
David.
Pleasure.
Melanie? All right, everyone clear on nine and we're good to go. Page ten, still fences.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's hear this.
Seven point five, seven point two, point four.
Okay.
First off, the last line, it says, except as prohibited by section seven point eight point three.
Right, one.
Well, there is a seven point eight point three, well, there is a seven point eight, but now that's retaining walls and not fences. So we shifted it around. So that little pointer there points to nothing. This is one that I have a concern with. It's probably gonna, it should say, except prohibited by section. Seven point five, seven point two, point two.
Right.
Yeah, like, we just moved the sections around, but I have a question about this. Because I won't back a vote on it because this directly affects me. My house is the first one on thirteenth street, facing thirteenth street. The house on the corner that faces Oak Island Drive. Their backyard is my side yard, okay? So according to the way this, this is written, the way it used to be written when I tried to get my permit. That last part was not on there, so I could run a six foot fence all the way down my side yard to the property state. When I come to get the permit, they said it had been changed, so I could only run a six foot fence. To the corner of my house and then a four foot to the road, which I did. Then the house next to me changed ownership a couple of times. They came across and put a, you know, I've got the white fence or whatever. They came across and put a six foot fence. Down the road, which is permitted, put up four posts, put three boards over my four foot fence and then stopped their fence. Now, if they can run a six foot fence around their yard, why can't I run a six foot fence down my side yard?
Uh, so you're dealing with a corner lot configuration there? Your, your neighbor that faces Oak Island Drive is a corner lot, right? Yeah, so what you're running into there is that the, the fence ordinance, and I believe that's why this section was written this way, is to allow for. It was amended some years ago, once again, before I got here, but it was allowed that that corner yard. Could fence a six foot all the way down from the front of the house, all the way down into the back.
Okay.
So you're right. So what you're running into is a difference because they have a corner lot allowance. And you don't have that corner lot allowance because you're not a corner lot, but it does affect you because now you've got. Six foot along that, what's their rear, uh, and along the side of the property line. Whereas you, as not being a corner lot, you have to stop with the four foot at the front of your house as it goes towards the street. That's right.
So what, what's the purpose? I mean, if they can have a six foot fence, why can't I have a six foot fence?
Yeah, what's the, why can't we all have a six foot fence?
No, I ain't saying everybody.
That's what you're running into. Well, that's what you're running into.
His front yard.
Yeah.
So what it should be, the adjacent lots, two corner lots.
Right.
Are allowed to have a six foot fence to their.
If, if that's what you, yeah, I mean, that's the issue you're trying to address. That's how you would address it, yes.
That's what it said until you put in the part, except as prohibited by s- section, which is seven point five, seven point two, point two. Cause the only lots it should affect are the ones, the first lots on, on the side streets. It's not, it shouldn't affect anywhere else on the island, in my opinion. But like I said, I've already got a four foot fence now, so I'm not going to take it down.
Now you got one beside it too, right?
Well, I got, I got three boards on the other side, yeah.
Yeah. Hey, if you want, if the board wants to address that situation, you write it as lots adjacent to, you know, the property line adjacent to a corner lot or something like.
But wouldn't.
Is allowed to have a six foot fence to their front adjacent property line.
But wouldn't, it don't seven point five, seven point two, point four already say that?
Uh, not when you add in the one that you're, you know, like you're talking about the, the exclusion that was added in there.
Yeah, but if we just take the exclusion off, wouldn't that say the exact same thing?
Well, you might run into a situation that's not a corner lot where those two perpendicular lots apply. I don't know. I can't say for sure. Uh, whether those exist on the island or not, but if you run into a, now, say this isn't a corner lot, but for whatever reason, your lot is designed to be perpendicular to that one. Now you might have something where. Uh, they don't have that corner lot allowance, but now you've got a, because you took that out, you've got a six foot fence running all the way on that side of the property.
Okay, so if it's one of the lots that, one of the streets maybe is wider than there's three lots on the end.
Yeah.
And the side streets would only be two. The middle lot there wouldn't be a corner lot.
It could be, and I mean, and like I said, the, you know. This is a little bit of a side thing, but we're thinking about things in terms of the island. The town of Oak Island is much bigger than just the way the island itself is plotted out. So we need to think about, okay, what are these situations in the future that we might run into? That we want to avoid as well. Um, so just going to throw that nugget out there too.
And I'll just throw another wrench in it that, you know, the three lots. We interpret. The rear fence. It has to, at some point it has to go down to four feet, correct?
Cause you can't build one within the, the street right of way of a front property line and because it has two front property lines, that's why you have to drop it down.
It's even more complicated on the three lots and I've seen them be forced to tear out the six foot. And put in the four foot, so part of the fence is six and part of it's four. So. I'm going to ask the question again. I mean, what's wrong with the six foot? In the front? I'm, I'm just asking. I'm not looking to put one in or anything. I'm just asking.
Uh, I mean, the, the issues that have been brought up with the six foot fence in the front property line is usually related to the safety aesthetics. Um, you know, public, uh. Public emergency responder access, things like that.
What does that look like as a community with everybody puts up a fence in their front yard? I don't think we want our community to look like that candidly.
A six foot fence up in some front yards in the wooded section. I've personally seen.
I don't think from a community aesthetic, I don't think we want to encourage that. So what are we changing here? What, what are we doing?
I think Mr. Brooks asked us to consider whether to allow a lot, a property line that's adjacent to a corner lot. That has a six foot, that would have a six foot fence allowance to also be. Able to put in a six foot fence and I can, I can wordsmith that.
Just on that side.
Yeah, because if the, I think what your point is, if, if that guy can put a six foot fence essentially along my side yard. Then why wouldn't I be allowed to also put a six foot fence? In the, essentially, you know, cause you can put a fence right up on the property line. So like if he could put one right on the property line, lock it up.
So can somebody articulate what the change is so that we can be clear?
To put a, um. Six foot fence is allowed in a, on lots adjacent to corner lots. Because that individual is looking for privacy from someone's backyard. Ultimately.
And I'll wordsmith it for you guys into some ordinance language.
Okay.
For sure, so we don't have to.
That, that's ultimately what those people are looking for is privacy in their front yard from a neighboring property's rear yard.
Right.
Cause I mean, they could have a pool back there, a splash pad, a.
And you're making a note on that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. That's all I have. Carrie?
Uh, where are we?
Page ten.
Clubs, sorry, hang on. I think I'm good for the moment. If you'll come back to me, I'd appreciate it.
Tim?
David? Page ten, good.
Melvin?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did have one question.
Yes.
On the seven point five, seven point two, point eight. It says fences shall be designed in a manner so that views of the ocean are preserved. I mean, that's vague as vague can be.
So that would be a footage. Allowed with what, four foot?
They allow four feet.
Add four foot into that will solve that issue.
No, it's already four feet.
Yeah, I think your point is to strike it because it's.
What are you saying? It, it should be a see-through fence, you know?
Well, I mean, that's just it. It don't, it, it says that, so that the views of the ocean are preserved. So does somebody have to put up a chain link fence because I live behind him and I can see through it?
I don't want to look at that.
Well, I don't either, but I mean, that's what I'm saying. It's just so vague.
Yeah, I don't think, um.
It's a good point because somebody's next door neighbor is going to challenge it, so let's think it through.
Yeah.
Most of the fences up there, aren't they the white vinyl? And you can't see through them. So do they, did they preserve the ocean views? I mean, if you're on the ground, can you see the ocean anyway? I mean, I guess you can. Looking out, you can see the horizon. So what's the?
Yeah, I think I would just strike out fences shall be designed in a manner so that views of the ocean are preserved.
Just keep it at four feet and hot.
Right.
I mean, that's what I was. I mean, that's what I was kinda thinking because I don't I don't know how to define it any other way.
So we're striking out fences shall be designed in a manner in that views of the ocean are preserved. Okay.
Tell back to clubs and lodges.
Okay.
I've got some questions. So just generally on clubs and lodges and private clubs and lodges, and my questions were around, do these ordinances, are there enough community and public safety regulations around hours, noise, lighting, parking, traffic management? I mean, are we okay with just these being the only ordinances related to these clubs?
Well, that implies that the rest of the UDO does not apply to clubs and lodges as far as parking, traffic, lighting, buffering, uh, noise, ordinance standards, et cetera. If there's something you wanna go above and beyond, beyond that, definitely let us know.
If we feel like the general UDO covers these things, I'm fine. I'm just saying, i- if, are we okay with just th- this as it's written here? Where it limits um against certain types of businesses in these clubs? I'm okay with it if we are.
I mean, the UDO covers the noise, the parking, and everything else.
I'll correct you, the the general code of ordinance says covers noise, not the UDO.
Thank you.
Don't call me if you have a noise complaint, call the police, call the police.
If we wanna make it stricter, that's where we need to put it in there.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
I mean, personally, I don't see, I don't think it's right to make it stricter than the party going on at the house next door to me. Personally.
Because I mean, those type entities are pretty well restricted where we can put them anyway.
And the hours and...
Yeah. I mean, I...
Well, we don't, don't really, don't generally restrict many of the hours of operation in the code of ordinances. There are two or three things, or in the the general UDO. There's a couple of things that have hours of operation limitations, but it's pretty few and far between. It is something that can be done via zoning ordinance, but once again, if if somebody is, uh, if you said an hour of operation is closing at 10:00 PM at night and you call zoning because they're open at 10:30, you're gonna get a voicemail and, you know, who's gonna come out there and check it and when is becomes a question there, which we could, but that, it is something that we would run into uh, on our end as far as how you prove it, you know, when it's proved, et cetera. Because we can't, I mean, once again, I'm not the police. We don't come rushing out. If somebody calls us, we schedule an inspection, you know what I mean, to inspect a problem. So, you know, you run into a little bit of an administrative problem there.
It was just a discussion point.
Yeah, absolutely.
Tim. David.
Good.
Melvin. Cool. Page eleven. We are in manufacturing and colleges and universities, libraries and libraries private. Gene. Just one question about the seven-point-X-point-three.
Wait, which one? Tell me which category you're talking about.
Number eleven, on page eleven, the top one.
Okay.
Where it says shall contain three shade trees and eight intermediate shrubs. Do we define shade trees?
Yeah, the UDO has its own landscape table requirements.
Good. I just wanted to make sure. That's all.
Okay.
And that is pertaining to manufacturing light, right?
Light, light manufacturing.
In those areas.
In those areas.
Yeah, we we lose the numbering system here, so let's make sure we we know what category we're talking about as we go through.
Manufacturing heavy. That's all I have.
Okay.
I'm good.
Carrie, your notes.
Uh, manufacturing light, that's where we are?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am.
Just wondered, um, Matt, are we covered as far as restrictions on like chemical runoff, storage, things like that? Do you think, are we okay with that?
Chemical runoff is not really something you would address in a zoning ordinance. That usually goes through like a environmental type of review, DEQ, a state regulatory agency, or a local stormwater runoff person. As far as, you know, storage, you could certainly uh, go as big or as little as you want as far as like outside equipment, material, storage type of regulations, uh, buffering, setback requirements, et cetera, if you wanna get that granular with it.
Do you feel like we need to from an enforcement perspective?
Uh, from, for light manufacturing, the way it's defined in the ordinance typically not because that's all gonna be enclosed anyway and there's not any uh, there shouldn't be any disturbances off of the property essentially. That's how it's defined, is something that doesn't have off-site disturbance. In addition, we have uh additional setbacks for these properties for light and heavy manufacturing in excess of what we would normally have as well as buffering requirements. So as far as what you would do from a zoning standpoint, now whether you wanna tweak those and make them bigger or less or, you know, whatever, that's that's you guys' recommendation for sure. Uh, I mean, as we've, we've talked about this a little bit as nauseam, but these are only permitted in a district that is currently not zoned anywhere in the town. So we're not opening ourself up to anything, you know, one way or another.
Okay.
Tim. David.
Uh, manufacturing heavy, so seven-X dot-seven, such uses shall use pervious materials for parking, loading, and unloading areas?
Yeah, it has the same thing on light.
Yeah, I don't um, I don't think that works very well for loading and unloading areas.
Matt, what would be the consideration for pervious gravel?
Uh, well, there's all kinds of pervious parking uh, materials that you can put in. There's pervious asphalt, there's pervious concrete that can be made to withstand pretty heavy loads. I've, you know, been through many a parking lot that has almost all or completely pervious materials. The the thought here is, uh, in addition to seven-point-six, you know, we wanna lessen the environmental impact of these uses as much as possible. And so limiting stormwater runoff by use of pervious materials by low-impact development practices was something that we wanted you guys to consider. Now, whether you feel that's a step too far or should be something different, you know, you guys are really welcome to give us suggestions or feedback. But I tried to give it as much uh, land use regulation, you know, to offset stormwater flood hazard impacts, et cetera, as I could conceivably, you know, come up with. Now, whether or not they could design a, now, when you get into loading and unloading, go ahead and preface this, um, you're not gonna be able to design a gravel pervious material that's gonna withstand that load. So you're gonna be pushed into uh, a more stable pervious concrete type of situation versus gravel.
Yes.
Because by, the more gravel you put down, when gravel, when you drive over it, it compacts. So after you put a certain depth of gravel in, it's actually no longer considered pervious, it's impervious. So by the time you put enough gravel in to support a large truck for a loading or unloading, it's not gonna count as pervious anyway, so you're gonna have to look at alternative material um, for that.
And that would be just for the parking, the loading and unloading area? They could use anything else outside of that area that would be considered impervious?
Yeah, I just didn't wanna presume that they might have, you know, you can't cover everything all the time. So the thing is that most of these types of businesses, establishments would have. You know, let's see if we can ask them to use pervious materials. You know, but like I said, if that's, you know, taken a little bit too far, it's, you know, I'll accept that feedback.
Yeah, I personally think it is. Like Matt said, they put that in there to see if it was too far. Everywhere I see pervious concrete, they're not doing the required maintenance to it. It's full of debris, trash, it's dirty. When a kid falls on pervious concrete, it's gonna hurt.
Yeah.
You, sites already have maximum impervious areas and so forth. This would actually only allow them to build bigger because now this isn't pervious, so they can put that pervious space somewhere else.
That's why we also included a floor area ratio requirement. So you would still be limited on what you could build on the site despite allowing, you just wouldn't be restricted. You might have less restrictions from uh, pervious, impervious, a lot meant, but that floor area ratio would still restrict how much you could actually put on the lot regardless of whether you did it or not.
So they could still put regular concrete at the loading and unloading and...
Well, not if that's in the ordinance.
If that's in that.
Yeah, if you took it out.
It would still have to be pervious.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I I would like to suggest that, you know, having that for parking is one thing, but I don't think it's reasonable to require that for loading and unloading. I mean, I feel like they might very well need extra reinforced concrete to handle the, I mean, depending on what they're doing, you know, I I don't have a problem with a gravel parking lot, but I don't think requiring pervious material for loading and unloading, I I don't think that's...
Just, I I think the property owner should be be able to decide whether they want a concrete parking lot, an asphalt parking lot, or this loading bay or that that loading bay. They're the ones that has to maintain it.
To maintain it.
Right.
And if it's not maintained, it's not gonna do the function it's supposed to.
And it's not gonna look it.
Yeah.
Well, let alone that, it's not gonna last. Coming from somebody that years ago worked for a trucking company, and we put in a non-pervious parking lot and loading dock area, tractor-trailers still go through the non-pervious parking lot and just make the biggest, you know, what out of it. So, I mean, I would make a recommendation just to pull seven-point, seven-X, seven-X, seven?
Seven-X-seven.
Yeah, seven-X-seven.
Six and seven, the one for light and heavy manufacturing.
Right.
Yeah.
Out.
Yeah, I would.
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna strike through that on my page.
Yeah. It's a consensus.
I mean, there is a certain percentage of the property, right?
But they can still do it, they're just not forced to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I'm good, we covered, Matt?
We covered. Everybody good with colleges, universities? Okay. Seven-point-X schools, K through twelve, page twelve.
I don't have anything.
Uh, this includes fire stations, country clubs, trade, penal correction, governmental, postal, and fire stations. Carrie.
Did we have definitions on penal um, institutions, Matt? I think I was looking through the definitions, I didn't see anything.
Well, I mean, the, I'm building, I mean, this is building the supplemental regulations, we're building the definitions section. Uh, if there's not one in there and it's marked from our last conversation to have one.
It'll be added. Okay. That was the only question about that.
I tried to focus on getting as many supplemental regulations done as I could because that's usually the the bulkier part of the work versus usually I can find a definition here or there.
I have anything on that. Tim. David.
Give me just one minute.
Go right ahead.
About seven more lines. We're back to seven-X-point-six under penal and correctional facilities. Uh, the the pervious materials there.
Same thing. Yeah.
That is the only thing I see.
Is a a hundred-foot setback distance enough?
Y'all can make it more or less.
I think likely it'd be much higher than that under their design.
Under, yeah, you're gonna have...
I'm just, you know, yeah.
I I see fire stations wasn't required to use pervious materials.
Because we've already got some fire stations here in the town.
There you go.
So the change we have on page twelve is seven-point-X-point-six, striking the use of pervious materials for parking and unloading and loading areas.
And Mr. Bradley, if we go, if we go back up to trade, school, trade, or vocational?
Yes.
Just was curious um, about vehicular access. It says shall not apply to institutions with two-hundred or fewer students. Two-hundred cars, a hundred and ninety-nine cars is a lot. So why are we saying this doesn't apply for two-hundred or fewer students?
Uh, well, the same thing. Two-hundred cars is a lot, but typically when you have a a trader or vocational school, uh, all those classes aren't meeting at all at the exact same time. You know, you have scheduled some classes. So despite having two-hundred students, you're not gonna have two-hundred people there all at the same time. What would trigger an additional provision then is uh, one, th- these are required to be on a collector or a higher designation street, which is gonna be a state road. So then the DOT is gonna look at your driveway access permit and determine whether or not you need a uh, traffic impact analysis done. Typically, when you have a lower amount of students, even in a trade or vocational school, which might be all adults, you're not gonna have the required traffic volumes to actually need a TIA, traffic impact analysis. We tried to peg it close to something to that. Um, you could certainly lower it, raise it, and do it, you know? That's just a starting point number there.
So do you feel like that's sufficient?
Once again, I I don't think it ra- anything below that is not likely to require a a school that size to require a traffic impact analysis. So that was what we tried to peg it to.
Yeah, these days, the majority, that's gonna be done online anyway.
It it seems unlikely also that a a trade or vocational school of that size is not gonna be a a community college. You know what I mean? That level of establishment versus a, you know, where you might be taking some electrician, you know, a smaller scale vocational class. Also, looking at the properties where this would even be allowed to go into, you know, you're pretty much restricted to uh, airport, highway, two-eleven areas of town.
C O D, right? And and industrial districts are the only ones that's law?
Which once again is gonna be state roads for the most part. I don't think there's any town roads out there.
Okay.
Are we good on this section? Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to uh, ask for a break of ten minutes.
Sounds good to me.
Recession ten. And we are back, re-adjourned. Okay. In the interest of time, I would like to make a motion for the definition aspect of this, for us to put notes in on the sheets that Matt has provided. Send a copy of your uh, suggestions into Lisa and Matt, and they will collaborate and have for our next meeting.
Starting on page fifty-five of your book, you have a a table with the terms on one side and a space for notes on the other, so.
When would you like that sent to you by?
Uh, it would depend on, well, since you're sending in an individual, we'll need it before the next meeting because we'll need to review as a board if there's any suggestions or recommendations that we need to, so um, two weeks.
Next meeting's the...
Ten, ten days before the next meeting, yeah.
Ten days before the next meeting.
Every set.
Is what date?
The twenty-second? Is it third or fourth?
Third.
Oh, it'd be fifteenth then. February fifteenth?
Fifteenth. 15th?
If you guys can get it to me by next Monday, which would be February 5th.
Okay.
That, that should give me enough time to take a look at it and then have it all. I'll probably run off copies, say who, what came from who, and give it to y'all, so y'all can discuss any notes or feedbacks or suggestions as a group.
Okay, we are on page 75.
Mr. Chair, I do have a, just a question for, for Matt. Matt, where, where do we sit on the, you know, you had issued this timeline for a lot of this work. Um, where, can you give us a recap of kind of where you feel like we are? And where?
Yeah.
Where we're headed?
Uh, the, yeah, absolutely. So when we talked about this with council last year, we talked about, uh, you know, taking in, in the range of somewhere around seven or eight months, uh, I believe. The planning boards discussed this at length. You know, we've also had it on the agenda a couple of times and not taken discussion or action on it. So we're, we're right in that range where we should be wrapping up our stuff. So we definitely need to, like we did today, keep it moving, run through our supplemental regulations and get everything drafted. So I'm hopeful, you know, when you bake in the, the, the time that, you know, we've had agenda items that had to get pushed or moved or whatever, we'll still be right on track with that. If not, a little bit late, you know, you can't always help having to move a meeting or move an item from one month to another, or, you know. So, uh, we're, we're doing okay on time, I think, but we do still need to keep, keep on track and keep, keep it moving, so we can, you know, try to get something done. I'll say if we can, I was thinking about this the other day. Uh, town council adopted a, a pretty major revision to the tree ordinance. If we can also revise the table of uses and get both of those done within 12 months, this planning board will have done some, some pretty good work, in my opinion, so.
So Matt, if we, if I look back at that schedule that we talked about, where, are we like at month four, review the table of uses and definitions, drafting changes based on feedback from planning board and stakeholders? Is that kind of where you feel like we are?
Uh, no, we're closer to the, um, I don't have it in front of me right away, but, uh, I believe we had before going to town council, looking at a couple of months for looking at drafting and adopting these things. So, uh, without having that, whatever you're looking at right in front of you, we're closer to that, uh, month five or six portion of it at this point. As far as that goes, but I can definitely look at it, and if you want me to, I'll be happy to put a timeline of what we had and then what planning board actions have been. I'll be happy to work with the clerk on that and show it to you.
Yeah, I would imagine council's probably going to be asking for us to update them on where we are and when we're going to finish up, I would imagine.
Okay. Discussion on signs and regulations, new business.
Yes, I, I'll, I'll kind of kick this one off a little bit. I just put this on your, uh, agenda to discuss. We've had a, a couple of people contact us about interest in putting up off, permanent off-premise signs, especially along Highway 211 in Middleton in the town's jurisdiction. Our town ordinance doesn't specifically, uh, address an off-premise sign. Now, what is, an off-premise sign is you're advertising on a piece of property for a business or something that's not also on that piece of property. It is one of the areas, uh, where content ba, content-based regulation is still permitted by the North Carolina, or by the Supreme Court of the United States. They reviewed a case last year, the year before. Because as we all know, you can't really base your regulations on having to read the sign, for the most things, but they looked at the off, on and off-premise regulation and said, you can still differentiate it based on on and off-premise. So this is something that we are legally permitted to do, should the board want to make a recommendation on something. Currently, in the C L D, which is where, uh, most of the inquiries have been, a pole sign up to 20 feet and 200 square feet in sign area is permitted. So definitely wanted to get some board feedback on whether they'd like to, uh, potentially address this, because it's not specific, you know, if, if we had a specific direction in our comprehensive land use plan to say, hey, this is what you should do with off-premise regulations, I'd probably be bringing you in ordinance and say, hey, we need to address this. But since we don't, um, you know, I wanted to get your feedback, uh, on whether this is something you want to address or not. You know, certainly 20 square feet or 20 feet tall and 200 square feet doesn't necessarily rise to the size of a billboard, but it is a pretty big sign. Or what most people would consider a billboard. You know, those are usually much larger. There's a couple of ways that you could tackle this, uh, if you were so inclined. You could create a zoning overlay district in certain areas where there's more restrictive sign regulations. I've seen this done in corridors in the past where you want to say, hey, we want a different type of signage along this corridor, even though it's the same as a zoning district we have over here. You could just amend the ordinances in certain ways to restrict the sign allotment, you know, maybe height, size, et cetera, something like that. Or you could consider, uh, you know, just not allowing permanent off-premise signage in the town. The problem with that last approach is we have some billboards along Long Beach, going, when you get past the Old Bridge in the C L D. So you might run into a legal nonconformity situation with those. But just wanted to get your feedback on it, see whether it's something, you know, we've been working hard on several other ordinance changes, so. This one's been a little bit on the back burner, but we didn't have any major business items to discuss other than the table of uses, so it seemed like a good opportunity to bring it up and get you guys' feedback and see if there's something, or if it's something you want us to tackle at all. You know, it might not be a concern.
Question. Could we make the size mimic the billboards on Long Beach Road as minimum?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
That would solve, uh, the bulk of the problem. It's a billboard or nothing.
Yeah. I mean, I'm open to any kind of approach you guys want to take, that this is literally.
Because I can, I can foresee if we do anything and we do certain standards, we're going to have signs popping up all along Middleton. So if you set the minimums to match the billboards on Long Beach Road, we're not going to make those nonconforming, but yet it's, and you're going to have to have the, uh, approval for billboards to come in down that stretch anyhow, they're going to come.
Now, are you talking about the billboard?
No, I'm talking about.
Long Beach Road, or the smaller ones that are closer to the ground?
I'm talking about mimicking saying minimum standards for off-site sign being the size of the billboards on Long Beach Road. So that you're not getting a bunch of smaller signs down Middleton. That's just going to be along the sides of the road. And that's what's going to happen if we do anything. It's going to create an opportunity to put signs up all the way down Middleton, up and back.
Billboards are required to be X mile feet apart in the county, and they're required to be on, well, that's in the county, this is.
This is.
Yeah, so this, this is, this is an important point, too. This is a, a zoning regulation. So there, there are requirements for what most people consider billboards on state maintained roads that I don't really have any say in. You know, if somebody meets those requirements and goes and gets a permit from DOT, whatever my zoning ordinance says, it doesn't really apply at that point. But if somebody wanted to put one on their, on their property that was maybe, you know, direct, happened to be directly adjacent to, you know, 211 or Middleton or something like that, and it is in my zoning district, then whatever signage ordinance I have could potentially apply in that instance. You know, if we're worried about the signs that we have, you know, that, that might be, you know, option for an overlay where you say, okay, you know, along these corridors that we're worried about off-premise signage popping up on, you know, we could create a corridor, however deep or long we want, and just say, no off-premise signage allowed in these corridor districts, you know. So there's different ways to attack it, and it just depends on, uh, the feedback I'm, you know, we might need is whether we want to encourage these signs or discourage them, and then what ways do we want to discourage them or encourage them from happening?
So, so we're not talking about the large billboards down state roads, right?
No, because it, once again, if they, there, there are state regulations for that that we can't do anything about.
So if we're coming down Long Beach Road toward the Old Bridge, we're talking about the two billboards right past the Dollar General on the right?
I think that's what you're talking about, yes, sir.
And then there's one, uh, a little bit before it, like a U-Haul rental place? So that's the size of billboards that we're, we're speaking of?
Yeah, what we're talking about would be the, the pole sign that's allowed in our ordinance right now, which is 20 feet tall, 200 square feet in sign area. It's not a small sign, certainly.
Right.
But when you think about a billboard, it's usually closer to, I'm not a sign expert, but 400 square feet, so maybe double the size, usually quite a bit taller, that kind of thing. So that type of sign would not be allowed in our zoning districts if it's on a private piece of property, it's owned appropriately, because we don't have a sign. You know, we don't allow you to build a pole sign that big or that tall anyway. But the, uh, really the crux of it is, you know, are we okay with off-premise signs? And that's, that could be a yes or no. Like I said, the comp plan doesn't really speak on it a whole lot. And if so, or if not, how do we want to address it? Do we want to make them smaller? Do we want to, you know, not allow them at all in certain areas? Do we want to not allow them at all in the town? You know, what kind of approach makes sense? Because I don't want to draft something and come in and say, hey, this is what we talked about, you know, or this is brand new, you know, without kind of at least getting some feedback from you guys first.
By off-premise, your specific definition is?
An off-premise sign is a sign on a piece of property that's advertising, uh, business or use that's not on that same piece of property.
Okay.
But it says in commercial areas, so coming down Middleton, from 211, coming down Middleton to On the Island. Those sides of the road, are they commercial use?
Uh, so the, the signage ordinance is based on the underlying zoning. So the signs we're talking about here are permitted in the C L D zoning district. They wouldn't necessarily be permitted in the, the P U D, which is the Williamson piece of property. But any property along there or in that corridor that's on C L D, right now has an allowance for it essentially at that size. What I didn't want to have happen is people essentially put these small pole signs up, you know, or applied to have them put up. You know, we, well, why is this essentially many billboard on 211 or Middleton, you know, and not have had this conversation to see if it's something the planning board wants, thinks we should address?
I think as we grow, it makes good sense to try to build some ordinance and regulations around them, certainly. I think it's a great point, Matt. We certainly rely on your expertise to bring forward some language about it, though.
Well, personally, you know, obviously, it's, you know, I would prefer not to see them, but you said that that would make some nonconforming?
If you did like a blanket town, say no off-premise signs in the town of Oak Island, you know, especially on Long Beach coming into town over the Old Bridge, or, you know, by Dollar General, the, um, airport and stuff like that, we certainly have some. So, uh, you run into, you know, when they go to maintain it or replace the sign face or something like that, you know, if it's illegal nonconformity, we got to have that chat with them about bringing it into conformance with the ordinance. So I, I'll work up a, I mean, if, if the consensus is something we're concerned with and want to go ahead and address, um, I'll probably work you up a couple of options as far as ways that we can address it, uh, and bring it to you, hopefully. Ooh, February 15th is coming quick. Uh, I'll try to get you something next, at the next regular meeting. Assuming I can crank it out. If, uh, and I'll approach it a couple of different ways. I'll show you guys what an overlay might look like, uh, as well as, um, some ways we might, limit the signage or regulate the signage that complies with our comp plan, but just text. That sound okay?
Some information about how many there currently are.
I will try my best to do a count. I got right down the road already, though.
Because that's what I'm trying to do in my mind.
About 11 or 12.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a couple.
There's a few.
On 211, but that's, that's.
That's state.
That's a state road.
Yeah, if they're in the state road right of way, that's not anything I can do anything about.
Yeah, other than those.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm trying to think of where this would actually be, because Middleton, it's a state road also.
It is, yes, sir.
Like I said, we're not talking about there, we're not talking about 211, nor Long Beach Road.
But once again, that, that's in the state road right of way. If somebody wants to put one on their private property that's on C L D, you know, if it meets the sign regulations and the ordinance, they could, they could do it.
Yeah.
Right? So not only might you have somebody who comes in and applies for a permit from the state to put one in, you might also have additional people with maybe a vacant piece of C L D property along 211, and they say, well, I'm not building anything here, I'm going to put up off-premise sign and advertise for businesses in the area, which, you know, if that's something we want to allow, that's fine. Just wanted to have the conversation first.
Yeah.
And, and we did have, per the U D O review, there are some, and I think I copied you all, on what we took away is other revisions that need to be made to this. So maybe we could wrap all that, Matt, into some proposal of part four generally? I think I copied you on.
You didn't answer.
The action list, yeah. So that we could revert, address off-premise and other signage suggestions that we had prior.
Yeah, I can definitely take a look. I mean, as far as the next regular meeting, I'll focus on off-premise for sure, because we only have a couple of weeks till that meeting, so I want to make sure I can get the agenda ready to go. But I can definitely wrap up some of that other stuff as we go forward, absolutely.
Matt, what, have we had any input on this off-premise issue and signs in general from the Business Advisory Board? I would assume that they would want to have some input into this as well?
Uh, yeah, I've spoke with, um, Hallie, our Economic Development Director, a little bit about this as well, so I'll definitely continue to seek out her input and any input from the Business Advisory Board as well. Yeah, absolutely. We'll keep that conversation open.
It might be good if you bring back some revision, revised ordinance here, that Hallie come and make sure that, you know, she can be comfortable from a Business Advisory Board perspective.
Sounds like a plan.
Very good. We are down to board member reports. Gene?
Anything, sir?
Nothing for me.
Tim?
Nothing for me.
David?
Yes, sir.
Melanie? Okay, I am good. Staff reports.
Uh, nothing major to report. You have your running items of council, awaiting council consideration in there. Was very pleased that we were able to, uh, remove provisions to chapter 32 in there. That was a, a great thing for the, the town to accomplish, uh, as a whole. I did want to go ahead and, uh, pose one quick question to the board. Something that I've run into since I've come here is the way our meetings are scheduled. If you're not aware, the planning board in the month meets after town council meets. In my experience, that's a little unusual. It has certain benefits and drawbacks. What I'd like, uh, to ask the board to do is consider moving that, our regular meeting a little bit earlier in the month, uh, to either the first or second week. The first, uh, would be my preference, because the council's on the second week of the month, and that's usually a lot of prep work for that. But there's a couple of reasons why. The way our meetings are set up right now, there's a lot of times where you guys make a recommendation on a Thursday that's scheduled to go to the next town council meeting, and I have to advertise it the very next day, which is doable, but also a little bit of a struggle if the planning board, especially, you know, recommends something different or addresses a different topic or something like that, then after, even if I have advertisement ready to go, I might have to, to get that taken care of, get it to Lisa to advertise in the newspaper. In addition, uh, I have to get that staff item prepared and ready for town council, too, with the planning board feedback as well, um, which is a little bit of a time crunch when council's only, in a lot of instances, three weeks, sometimes it's even less, between planning board and town council. For you guys, if you move it, especially if you move it to the week before Town Council, you actually get to look at your minutes before the council meeting. So you would make a recommendation, let's say, the first week of February, that would go to the council regular meeting in March. Well, you have your regular meeting the first week of March, so you actually get to potentially take a look at those minutes for everything you did before it gets, that item is actually heard by Town Council. The drawback of that is it would take, it would add a couple of weeks from when this board technically made a recommendation to when it got to Town Council. If you guys are on the first or second week of the month, there's no way I can advertise those items and get them in front of Town Council that quick. It would have to go to the next month. Now, for somebody has, has a project, you know, that's a little bit of extra time, certainly, but it lets that person prepare a little bit more if they have Planning Board feedback. You know, you have an extra couple of weeks to prepare before you get to council. Staff has time to prepare before it gets to council, and the public, too. You know, if they have a member of the public who's here, this planning board makes a recommendation, they have even more time to get ready before that item goes to Town Council. But, you know, if you are in a hurry to get your project done, there's really just not many options as far as speeding that, that timeframe up. And that's, a lot of times, it's because we have to do those extra advertising requirements that I couldn't just, you know, have Planning Board one week, council the next week, and forward everything. So definitely something, I don't want you to make a decision here and now, but definitely something to think about. It's something I've been thinking about since I first got here, was like, oh, I have, you mean I have to advertise and get my staff report ready in a week, from what the Planning Board did last week to council? But definitely, if you guys have thoughts or feedback or anything like that, take some time to think about it and, and come back to me with, with what might work, or whether you can make it work or not, and the first week of the month is sometimes busy for folks, so.
Matt, I think the only thing that we might do is maybe look at a calendar for the rest of the year and kind of see what dates those would fall on.
Sure.
So that everybody would kind of know, because there are a lot of holidays around end of the month, beginning of the month, right? So we can always adjust the schedule, the meeting schedule, but I think it'd be good to kind of look and see what that would look like on the calendar.
Yeah, and I can put that together for you and forward it to the group. It doesn't have to be in your agenda packet, I can, you know, just go out and we can talk about it next month in the regular meeting if you want to, if you've had a chance to look at it.
And, and Lisa, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I'm, I'm in full support. I just wanted to mention, were you thinking of changing it to Tuesday then, too, or keeping on the Thursday?
I mean, the, the meeting date, the day the meeting falls on itself is not as important as moving it back one or two weeks in general, so whatever day, you know, works for everybody for, you know, when we regularly schedule it, that, that's fine with me. I do know that the, the Environmental Advisory Committee meets on the first Thursday of the month, so if, if heaven forbid something were to happen to me or Brady, Brady covers the Environmental Advisory Committee, our planner one, if I'm not able to make it to that meeting, or he's not able to make it to that meeting, we might have some coverage issues there as far as having a planner there to help them out, or help you guys out if I'm not here, so. But really, like I said, the, the extra week or two is more important than what day it actually falls on for me, anyway.
Good. Go ahead.
Are we getting a replacement?
Yes. Council will vote February meeting, correct, and we'll find out who.
That's all I have for you guys as far as staff report is.
Very good. If you can put that together and we can look at our calendars, our next meeting, we will take that up and see how we can accommodate and make everything work. Is that it for everyone?
So the next, next meeting, Mr. Chair, is 15th?
Yes.
15th, I'm going to be out of the country.
You're going to be out of the country?
Yes, but I'll see if I can join virtually. If that's still, is that still an option?
One, two, three. How many to the form? Four? Okay.
Yes.
I better get it right.
Everybody?
I thought it was the fourth Thursday, that's what, just once I just realized that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Won't be here the 15th either. We better...
Is it a week, Mr. Purser, or just that day, or any time that week?
15th, 16th, 17th, 18th.
So earlier in the week, would that?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Right.
No, earlier in the week, we have a council meeting.
Oh, council meeting, that's right. Oh, yes, second week.
Let's don't put them on the same day.
Could we back it up a week?
That would cause two weeks out.
Let me double check on that, just to make sure, because I may be getting Thursday and Friday confused, it may be Friday that I'm not going to be here. We may be leaving Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
Check and let us know, and we will...
I will, today.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? We're adjourned.
Thank you very much.